Mr. will lead us in the plane.
Take a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
Mr. Second?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting. That would have been.
Five-fourteenth.
Five-fourteenth, right. Okay.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Ms. Second. Ms. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks. See a show of hands that you did receive a copy of your check register this time? Thank you. Okay, now we have our public comments. Remember, four-minute time limit. Now, listen for the clock up front. Mr. Quick, you're first only.
I usually am. That's just because I come by freakishly early to sign up. Just giving the Georgetown Main Street Monthly Report. You also notice that I have given you a handout with a more detailed list of activities, so that I don't stand up here for more than the four minutes. First and foremost, we had our Seventh Annual Taste Georgetown down at Royal Spring Park. Had a pretty good turnout in spite of the weather. And all of our vendors and participants were very happy that we were down there at the park instead of baking on the square. So, that's something that we're looking to keep. I've also included a more detail after-action review of the taste, so that you can see what I presented to the board as well as their feedback following. Gave a presentation at Scott County Public Library to the Friends of the Scott County Public Library on the Georgetown Main Street program. Really good time, get out there, meet some new folks, and get to talk about downtown, which I always love. We conducted an after-the-parade event on July the 4th, and our program coordinated with the Scott County Arts and Cultural Center on that. We got sponsors, gave away free hot dogs and water. Actually ran out of hot dogs, so we'll have to plan bigger for next year. But it was really good time, we had a great turnout. Like to thank the mayor for participating as one of the pie contest judges. We also brought the White Castle Crave Mobile in on July 12th. They came in on Saturday, hung out there in Courthouse Square, had a lot of folks out there. And they're already expressing interest in coming back, so we'll talk about a good time for them to do that. It's not something we want to have too much on the regular. But we've also seated our new board members. I've included in the packet also our updated list of board members with their positions. And we'll be actually conducting the formal orientation for them as well as refresher training for our current board members at our fall retreat, which will be August the 20th. Any questions or comments?
Thanks, David. All right, Ms. Rachel? Mergenthall?
Mergenthall.
All righty.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I am a student at Georgetown College and a member of the Capitalta Sorority. And I'm Vice President of Community Service, so I'm here promoting and hopefully approving our 5K. It'll be October 24th at 7:00 PM. And the proceeds, 80% will go to Prevent Child Abuse Kentucky, and then 20% will go to Prevent Child Abuse America, so we don't keep any of the proceeds. The race is, it's $20 in advance per racer, and it's $25 the day of. If you race, you'll get a T-shirt, and we will provide water and bananas and glow sticks. The theme of the race is a glow stick, like a glow run, so the racers are permitted to wear neon colors. Thank you.
Motion, Ms. Second? Second over here, either one?
They filled out.
Any discussion? Got everything filled out, and you're working out with the chief?
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck, Rachel. Thanks for being here. Mr. Rice?
Just wanted to give you a museum update. We have just now closed for a major renovation project. Of course, just to sort of remind everybody, the building itself is owned by the county. The museum is a separate Board of Directors, originally started under the Historical Society. But the building itself, it's 99 years old, it has several issues, and the county has come up with some money to do some major changes. Of course, last year, they had done some things to the exterior. Now, this year, it's the interior. The major things is heating and air conditioning, getting a whole new system instead of the old boiler system and the steam heat radiators and everything that we have. Getting a heating and air conditioning system at a cost of $137,000. And all-new lights. Those lights in there are terrible, a lot of them don't work, or they get hot and go off and cool down and come back on, and that's very annoying. But getting a whole new LED lighting system at a cost of about $70,000, so that's a total of about $207,000 that the county is investing in the physical building itself. There'll still be a few other issues in the future that we hope they'll address, too. Right now, we just closed. The construction is going to actually start mid-August, but we've got to put everything up. We've got a lot of valuable items down there that we've got to carefully pack away and put in safes or locked rooms and for protection, because there'll be a lot of people that we don't know going in and out there. And I'm going to be hanging around the building and just, you know, while the construction is going on, and watching it and trying to make sure nothing bad happens. And we may be closed till at least December. They, once they start, they have a 120-day window, so it'll probably be at least till December that we could open back up. Might even be January, but we hope not. But we'll have some kind of big, grand reopening kind of thing and make sure, you know, everyone, the public and everybody knows about it. So, we're really looking forward to having a somewhat of a new place down there. So, just wanted to let you know, and wish we could still be open, but we've got to close, and it's going to be nice when it's done.
Is there anything that we can do from our PD standpoint to try to harbor maybe some of those very valuable things that you have down there, or maybe even the Sheriff's Department as well during the process?
Well, I don't know, I hadn't really thought about that. Because we've got some very valuable paintings and that, of course, we have two safes down there that left over from when it was a post office. We think we're going to be able to fit all those items in there. But if not, that would be a great backup, yeah.
I would, I'm sure our chief would work with you one way or another to accommodate that.
That's great, that's a great idea, thank you.
Thank you for the update, Dave.
Okay.
Ardy and Veronica. Welcome back.
Have a handout. We have to plan ahead. We have to plan ahead. And again, we're here for our, this is going to be our fifth year for the Thrill to Give, and we're requesting the street closure from the museum to Broadway, October the 25th. That's a Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. And our rain date, which we've had to use twice the past four years, the next day, Sunday, October the 26th. And the rest, you can read if you like. We are going to try to have some more community involvement this year. We're going to do some contests, we're going to have some dances in the middle of the street before we actually do the Thriller Dance, so we're actually going to try to do some more type of community events where we can raise a little bit more money for the Amen House. So, that's our request.
So, will those be before the 7:30 timeframe?
Yes, it will be before the 7:30, because it fluctuates a lot. It fluctuates with how people are getting downtown, and it also depends on the weather, how that works. But we wanted to have more activities for the participants to do while they're waiting. And on a Saturday, hopefully, this will give merchants an opportunity if they want to open or sponsor some events outside their store, which they have done before, because a lot of times, we've done it on a Sunday. And simply because it was a little bit more convenient. But this year, we're going to try to go for the Saturday, because last year, we had, we predicted maybe close to 4,000 downtown, so we wanted to be able to offer some more opportunities for the merchants maybe to, you know, equally have some, you know, money-making opportunities in this event, so.
But the 6 o'clock timeframe gives you enough time to do all that?
We're very organized, and yes, we're, we'll have it, we'll do it. Yeah.
Perfect.
We got it.
I'll make the motion. Connie will make the motion, I'll second.
With them getting with the police chief.
Sure.
And all of that, but that's awesome.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Second?
You got it.
Okay, you got those? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There's no walk?
Hi, I thought this meeting would be an appropriate time to appeal to council concerning a purchase with the police department that I would like to see, actually. With the purchase of the new vehicle fleets, the cruisers, the new cruisers, don't have any video or audio equipment. And they have proven to be invaluable in the past, especially with excessive force complaints by officers, both protection for the citizen and protection for the officer in the fashion of, it reduces, it shortens the length of any internal investigation because video is available. I would go even further to request that instead of having the same system that they had before, there's something called an ICOP that is produced by TASER, and you can wear them on a pair of glasses or on their body. In that way, you can see everything from the officer's perspective, rather than being dependent on a vehicle-loaded camera and video, where they can get in and out of the image. I just, there's been, it's a shame that we would depend on not having evidence to back up our officers or the citizens of protection in a court system. And I think that it would be invaluable, especially in a day and age when everybody on the street has an iPhone, you can take a recording and get clips, and you really are in need of the ability to see the full picture and have a full streaming video and audio to be able to make those determinations. So, I didn't see it in the yearly budget proposed. I don't know, I know that Chief Bossy had, we had talked about it, he said there was no money in the budget for it, and that's why they had chosen not to go forward with it. But seeing as in the new budget year, with six new police vehicles being purchased and outfitted, I thought it would be a good investment for the city to consider purchasing the audio and video equipment for the police cruisers or the police officers. So, thank you.
Like to go. There you go. Okay, chief? Citizens Police Academy Volunteer Awards. I see you made it safe back from Louisville, you didn't bring any state troopers behind you, did you?
Drove the speed limit all the way, sir? I literally, I have to apologize, because I literally didn't have time to change.
You were fine.
So, every year, well, actually, two years ago, we reestablished our Citizens Police Academy, and we've had four classes since then. And in the past two years, our Citizens Police Academy has volunteered hundreds, literally, we've kept the numbers of hours to the city of Georgetown to man traffic posts during parades, to work booths during special events. They come in, work at the police department, they help us with the grass, they help us with the landscaping. And we thought it was appropriate that we should recognize some of our top performers in the area of volunteerism. I would ask that Officer Payne come forward, because she started, she took up the challenge two years ago, when we asked to reestablish our Citizens Police Academy. And she's had four classes since, she does all of the advertising for it and organizes the curriculum for each of the classes. And I know some of y'all have been through the class. It is a great education for people to learn about the community, not just policing, and I think we get a really good response from our graduates. If Kathy Locato would come up? Kathy's been with us even before the last two years, because she was with the original group of CPA, because we had a CPA back in 2005, and we kind of diminished over the years, and we just really reestablished it two years ago. Donna B. was also with that original, if you guys will stay here, we'll get a picture.
Ma'am?
Therese McGlothlin is one of our newer members. And Melissa Gibson is the Volunteer of the Year. She is the one that's put in the most hours in working with the police department. If you guys can come up, we'll get a picture real quick, so that we can get it on our Facebook. And I'll show you the, it's a really nice little plaque. It's engraved in acrylic, and it's just our way of saying, recognizing you, our appreciation for your outstanding work and dedication to the Citizens Police Academy and the community of Georgetown. Guests come up for me.
No. Thanks, folks. I'm going to get my gun and shoot somebody, don't care.
Thank you all very much.
Great. Chief, I certainly think that.
Well.
Has anybody on council done CPA? Okay, well, I have. And Natalie is absolutely awesome at scheduling and doing everything, and it was like a real live murder crime scene, the whole nine yards, for the whole 12 weeks. And it was a whole different perspective looking at it from a citizen's standpoint and a council member, but especially a citizen, as to what the police officers have to do. But my two favorite was the fast chase in the police car and the guns.
And we're not.
Please tell me you did not give Connie a gun.
I have my own. Yes, they did.
Oh, gotcha.
I know Arlene was a member of this past class, my associate, and she kept me up to date with everything that was going on, and she was, she was really excited.
It's impressive, I'm telling you.
I think it really adds to our community, and it gives people insight into police work that they're not privy to on a day-to-day basis, that's for sure. Okay, I'd like to comment on our safety committee. I reported earlier in a couple of council meetings ago that we were going to organize a safety committee for the entire employees throughout the city. We had a first meeting today, it's comprised of all the directors of the various departments. Megan did a very, very good job of getting everything organized for us for our first meeting. And we're going to be meeting on the third Monday of each month at 9:30. And certainly, employee safety is at the forefront of everything this committee is going to be doing. And we're going from, go from department to department with a sheet and try to find everything that we can find that's wrong within any department. And we're asking all of our employees to report anything they feel is an unsafe situation to us, so that we can address that. We want to be proactive instead of being reactive. So, I have a lot of faith in this committee, I think it's going to do a world of good for all of our employees. Again, it's going to be safety first for all of our employees. So, I'm glad we got that off, got our kickoff this morning, and I know it's going to be a good organization for us. Okay, next, Mr. City Attorney and City Clerk.
Well, the chief stepped out at the wrong moment. He's back for the inter-local law enforcement, somebody would grab him. We could switch it around if we need, if he's busy. How about we do that? Do the second reading.
Okay, we can go with second reading of the amendment to our personnel ordinance. We're going to go with that one.
An ordinance amending Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to create the position of engineering technician. Summary, Section 1, amend Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinances with such forth the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions for each department to establish the position of engineering technician, grade 8, within the general government department, to add one public works maintenance worker driver position and eliminate one public works maintenance worker position, and to add one sanitation worker driver position and eliminate one sanitation worker position. Section 2 provides that any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section 3 provides that if any portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unlawful, such portion shall be deemed a separate provision, and such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4 provides that this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetownky.gov. Introduce publicly read for the first time July 14, 2014. Publicly read second time July 28, 2014.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? Roll call vote, please, second reading.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
No.
Mr. Penn?
No.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Taggitt?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, motion does pass. It does, okay. I see the chief is back, so we'll go back to their interlocal.
The, for about the last year, the central Kentucky chiefs and sheriffs have been meeting, mostly in Georgetown, in reference to regional crime and regional policing issues. And for about the last six months, there's been a huge matter of interest in what can we do from a practical standpoint? The organization has existed for like three years, but there really isn't anything material that we've done to pull us all together and get us to working together. One of the problems that we identified, and one of the predictions that we made, was the, with the introduction of heroin and some of our stronger opiates, that we will see and have seen an increase in crime associated with addiction from those particular drugs. That is not a Georgetown issue, that is a regional issue. That affects, our drug dealers don't stay in Georgetown, Bourbon County's drug dealers don't stay in Bourbon County, they move around. And the people that are cursed with addiction don't steal just stuff in Georgetown, they steal stuff in Paris, they steal stuff in Winchester to support their habit. That has driven a lot of the conversation that's occurred in central Kentucky. And one of the very, the very practical ideas that came up was sharing jurisdictions with each other in a restricted manner, in a controlled manner, but that so our officers could assist in other counties. And the possibilities are pretty open. If on a night when we have three officers working, we have a fire on Main Street Georgetown, we will tie up all three of our officers on traffic posts in very short order, if you block off for the fire department in order for them to do their job. Under this agreement, we could call Paris and say, "Do you have any extra units working?" Not calling officers in, but Paris may be having a slow night, Paris can send us one, Frankfurt can send us one, Winchester can send us one, and our guys are free to answer calls. We could do that all over our telecommunications. Right now, what's happening is we have officers from Versailles that come through Georgetown. Our officers travel up into other counties with their vehicles as they take them home, and they run across DUIs. And we know from the past year that we've, just here in Scott County, lost two DUI cases simply because the officers did what they should have done, and that stopped the person because they were going to kill somebody. But the cases were thrown out because they didn't have jurisdiction to do that. That creates a real paradox for the officer, because he has to decide, "Am I going to take a chance?" And luckily, both of those cases worked out very well, there was no civil issue, the person waited, we did exactly what we would do under this agreement. We would call the host agency and say, "I got a vehicle stopped, can you send me a unit?" However, under this agreement, the officers would be safe liability-wise, because they would have actual jurisdiction to stop the vehicle. But they wouldn't take the arrest, they wouldn't carry the arrest through, they would, by order of our SOP that we have in place that goes with the agreement, have to call the host agency and say, "Look, I've stopped this guy, here's the circumstances." The host agency would then send their unit, and we would take an action. I venture to say what's happening now in central Kentucky is when an officer is on his way home or he sees something like that, he is safer in turning off on another street and taking, letting the vehicle go, because he's not covered under liability, he can be sued. We've been lucky, so far the cases have all worked out, we haven't had an issue where a drunk driver gets out and challenges the officer, and there's a physical confrontation, and now we have an issue because the officer has no real legal authority to address the individual and to use force. And there's no police officers in this jurisdiction or any other that are going to let someone beat them up, they're going to protect themselves. This would give us liability coverage for those issues. Also, the other things that are happening anyway with off-duty officers are, they're in other counties, they see things happening, and they're, if it's not an emergency, and this is mandated by our SOP, if it's not an emergency, you call the jurisdiction, you say, "Look, this is occurring, I'll monitor it till you get here, but I know I have the legal authority to do something if it gets worse." if it gets worse. That's basically what this agreement does. It's modeled after another agreement that was started in London about two years ago. We went down there and visited those six agencies. They have very seldom used this agreement, but when they have, it's been very useful for them. One of the biggest examples was a tornado that touched down in one of the adjoining counties. There were six different jurisdictions involved, and there was no having to call and make arrangements for mutual aid agreement. On that night, within five minutes of that tornado hitting, when you need the help the most, all the agencies in the agreement began to send units to that, I forget which city it was, that needed their assistance. They were able to go immediately and assist within 10 minutes of the touchdown of the tornado. We have tried to, with Andrew's help and the input of all the other chiefs and sheriffs, to control, because I think here's the fear, and I think we should talk about this. I don't want Georgetown officers in Paris writing tickets. I don't, Frankfurt doesn't want Georgetown officers in Frankfurt writing tickets. Specifically expressed in the SOP, officers will not travel to other counties to enforce, you know, special assignments unless, say, Frankfurt has an issue out on 64 and they need help on an accident scene, unless we're summoned by them to offer assistance. So there's some very critical controls put in place. And the concerns of the chiefs and the sheriffs was universal, that we control this in such a manner that it is beneficial to all the agencies and assist each of the cities. We have a great deal of momentum. I've talked to KCO. KCO's very much in agreement. I've talked to KLC. KLC has sent it to their liability people and their police advocate, and both of them agree that it's a very good, it's not going to increase our premium or anything like that, but that it's a very good agreement. So I don't believe you could have done this 20 years ago. I don't know that we were there professionally as organizations, but you have some very professional administrators in your surrounding counties and cities. And I think those administrators will help make this very beneficial to each of the cities and counties that are in agreement.
So Chief, is this a when-called-upon agreement?
Yes.
And does it protect the people in Bourbon County from us just traveling across the line to enforce whatever for those counties?
Specifically written into the SOP is that officers cannot take upon themselves, well, I want to write tickets on this portion of 64, but that's over in another county. Specifically says you cannot do that.
Perfect.
But it does cover, for instance, if an officer needs to go to adjoining county to do investigatory work. It gives them the right to do there, and if something happens, to make an arrest if necessary.
Right now, if we have a case of a theft in Georgetown, and we've traced it back to a pawn shop in Bourbon County, we would first call Bourbon County and say, hey, can you send us either a Paris police officer or a Bourbon County sheriff to meet us at this pawn shop? And we'll, you know, if we're going to make an arrest, we'll do it that way. Under this agreement, it essentially says the same thing. You will call first the host agency, but you will have the authority, if necessary, to go if they can't be there or for whatever reason.
There's always notification.
I'm sorry?
There's always notification.
Yes. The only exception is under incidental situations where there's an emergency and there's simply not time to call and ask permission. It gives the officer, it covers the officer for taking an action in that county to stop. I think it reads, it has to be an issue of public safety. Has to address.
I think you saying it doesn't increase our liability, but I do think you're also saying it increases our efficiency.
Oh, I think it's going to be.
And I think all of our cities around working together, it makes us all stronger.
That was the philosophy of the chiefs and sheriffs that were involved.
Who bears the cost, say, if there's an incident in Georgetown and it's a member of a different agency that renders help in that instance, and there's some sort of civil liability that arises? Who's insurance is going to pay for it? And does that affect our insurance premiums down the line?
According to KLC, it will not affect our insurance premiums. It would be very much the same as what's happening now. If I send two detectives to the pawn shop in Bourbon County and there's a use-of-force issue, our two investigators aren't going to sit there while the poor Bourbon County sheriff tries to make the arrest. They're going to get involved in the arrest. It's, it would be the same. Will both counties likely get involved under that scenario? Get sued, most likely. I can't guarantee that the same thing wouldn't happen under this scenario, except that our officers are covered by being properly authorized to take the actions.
There's a great provision in the law for agreements such as this that says an officer takes with him or her his liabilities and immunities to the jurisdiction.
So we're memorializing what we're doing right now, only with a little added protection from a legal perspective.
I think that's probably correct.
Yeah, what this does is really two things, in my mind. It gives the officers who are participating certainty. They know they have the legal authority to do what they need to do. And it also gives them education, because that'll be a major component of this, is the ongoing education. But most importantly, it gives legitimacy to any of the actions that arise. It gives, when an arrest happens and the person is arraigned and brought before court, doesn't get kicked out because we have a legal agreement that says that officer had the right to make that arrest, and here's the state law, and here's our agreement that says so. That really is the key.
It's greater protection for our officers.
It's happening already, like as you said.
And our officer was in compliance with that.
And this is not unlike many other agreements out there either.
There are quite a few in our local agreements like this.
There are many agreements of this nature. This is one of the larger in scope. But there are also some agreements that are dedicated solely to, say, drug enforcement that are much larger. So it's not a novel concept, but this particular agreement of this scope and this nature is a little bit new.
Chief, what's our standing with Fayette County?
I spoke with Chief Bassin early on in this agreement, and at this point, they're not interested in it. They were not interested when I was working there. I'm familiar with the reasons why. Lexington has their own academy. They train their people in their academy. All of the agencies that we're talking about attend the same academy down at ZOCTT.
We're also working with the State Attorney General and the State Police. And I fully expect that we get their 100% support behind it. And that support and getting it established may go a long way towards people eventually coming on. I mean, that's kind of what happened with Unite, which was a drug task force down in eastern Kentucky. I think it started out as 12 members, and over the course of 10 years or so, it's tripled, even quadrupled in size. And that's possible that they may, that may happen here locally.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Brad.
Second.
Second, Kelly. Any further comments?
I'm assuming the county's going to take this agreement also.
Yeah, it's been reviewed by Glenn, and he didn't have any issues with it, and we'll get this over to them as soon as possible.
I think it's a great step forward. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Think you guys did a great job on this. You'd be congratulating. Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Willhite. Want to buy some vehicles, aren't we? Okay, approval of a bid from Vanguard Construction Company for Champion Way Water Main Extension.
Yes, I put a map in front of your desk. You can see there we're talking about. This is the phase two, the Champion Way Water Main Extension. The low bid was from Vanguard Construction Company, an amount of $199,910. This is a capital budget item in our fiscal 2015 budget, and our board approved this item on July 15.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion, Mrs. Tackett.
Oh, second.
Mark.
Why the duck? Is it usual to use ductile iron or PVC?
Well, a couple of reasons. The size of the line and the area we're digging in is rock. So it needs to be able to withstand the pressure.
Because usually you'd use what?
Usually PVC.
PVC. How much more is it on a linear foot basis on for the iron versus the PVC?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'd get it for you, but.
That's all right. I can look it up when I get home. Just curious.
Any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Key? Approval of purchase order to Wildcat Ford for 2014 Escape. All these vehicles are in the budget.
Yes, these are all in the budget. They're all state price contract, and they were all approved by the board at the last meeting. The first one is to Wildcat Ford, $19,345 for 2014 Ford Escape.
Mayor, I'd make the motion that we just roll all three vehicles up in one motion.
That gets a good motion.
And I would, I'd make that motion.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do have a question, though. Are they replacing any vehicles? Are you surplusing those?
The Ford Escape is going to be replacing the 99 Blazer, which will go to the water plant, and then we will get rid of an older truck that's at the water plant. The Ford Explorer will be replacing a current Ford Explorer that will go to engineering, and then we will send their vehicle to one of the wastewater plants to get rid of a 1995 truck. The 2014 Ford F-150 four-wheel drive is replacing another four-wheel drive vehicle at Collections Department. So we'll be surplus, how we get through moving everything around, we'll have three vehicles to surplus.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next fellow.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay. Municipal order approving the purchase of six police fleet vehicles.
I don't know where Chief went, but I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Atkins has them out in the hallway.
Okay. All of these were in the budget, so.
Yeah, the only question I have, which I know I've made this comment before about the Toyota Camrys, what research or did those conversations take place? Because that's happened a few times.
It's your meeting, Chief. It's your meeting.
It's all about me.
Do you want to say about Toyota Camrys?
Toyota Camrys. We checked with Lexington because Lexington actually did a study about four or five years ago with the Camrys and using them as patrol vehicles. They found out that they could not bring the seats back far enough, put a cage in, still get a prisoner in. So they started redesigning the Camry with a, I thought it was a pretty good idea myself, of course, I was part of it, with a seat in the back. So you remove the backseat, and then you place a seat in there, and the seat comes out, and you stick the prisoner on the seat, and then you push the seat back into the backseat. And that really solved the problem because then in the front, you could have enough room for all of your officers, any size, to fit, and they could move their seats back and forth. We were quickly told why we're not engineers and why the whole car's designed around safety and that we probably ought to go just do police work. And so we looked at that possibility. I think it's more likely that we could use the Camrys in the future for administrative vehicles. Myself and my staff could easily use Camrys as part of our fleet. The detectives have quite a bit of equipment that they use for the Explorers. So I don't have any problem at all when our administrative cars, replacing them with the Camrys.
Okay. I'd encourage us to do that. I did a little research online. I did see where some cities were using them in the police department. And I know that it may not be, you know, it may not be as roomy perhaps as some of the other vehicles, but we did use them in the past when they were even smaller vehicles. And I'm not sure how much transporting that we did with the Camrys. Usually, I guess, a couple of officers would respond any time there's a situation like that, and maybe they put them in the back of a Crown Vic or whatever the case may be. But anyway, you all know that's something that I've mentioned many times before. You know, when we had the Camrys in Georgetown, it was, I don't know, it was kind of a neat thing. It was kind of impressive. It was unique, and people talked about it. It was kind of special. And I just, I recall it, and I'm not sure how many, you know, were involved back then. Mayor, I mean, obviously, everybody was here and remember it to some degree, but it was just, it was kind of, I don't know, kind of a cool thing.
Weren't we gifted those Camrys?
We may have been given some, but we've purchased some as well.
I just know the new Camry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The new Camry has got quite a bit of room in the backseat, and they're pretty nice.
Yeah.
We could relook at the amount of room.
Yeah, and we have heard from representative at Toyota specifically that they could do that. So that, I guess that's the other thing I would say.
I know the older ones, and this may be the difference. The older ones, the officers that had them said there's only a certain number of officers that could use the cars. The bigger officers could not because they couldn't get in there.
I think Swanigan actually discussed one night about the electrical systems in them and how it wasn't compatible with what they needed to as well.
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, I think Robert mentioned that. I'd make the motion, Mayor.
Okay. Second.
Second by Kelly.
I have a question about the AV cameras in the cruisers that Ms. Noack brought up. Is there, we have the cameras in there right now. I mean, as far as any given traffic stop is recorded visually.
We have very few cameras left in our fleet. A camera system costs about $5,000 to purchase and put in the vehicle. And what was happening is those systems would, after two years, and being in a car moving around, and about the day after they got out of their warranty, would stop functioning properly. And then the question became, well, why wasn't your equipment recording the incident? And the doubt became, well, you turned the, you know, how coincidental that your equipment didn't work. We are looking at, she's exactly correct, there are a lot of new, there's a lot of new technology out there that involves something you attach to your uniform. And we are doing some R&amp;D with those kind of units. I agree with her. I would much rather have a camera on my officer outside the vehicle in home than in the vehicle itself.
I saw one on TV the other night where the camera was sitting on a pair of glasses off to the side.
Yes, they can absolutely do that. These are, we're looking at the kind that you clip onto your, it looks about the size of a mic. Some are even small enough that they're almost the size of a pen now, so.
Chief, do we have any idea when you can come back with us with a proposal for those? Because I do agree that I think that's something that we should look at.
Yeah, we should know something in a couple of months as to how well they work and stuff. So, and KSP's doing some stuff with recorders as well. We'd like to hear from them and see how well it's going for them.
KLC probably would, you know, even think about, you know, it'd be something at least we could tell KLC and maybe even get a little discount on the insurance or at least.
Do we have any idea the cost of the smaller mounted?
The, I believe, the ones you attach to your uniform are like $400, $450, something like that.
Is that something that we could rotate shift per shift, or would every officer need that?
Well, part of the problem with a camera system is the storage of the data. And so we'd have to come up with a system that forensically stores the data so that it can't be manipulated, and we can testify in court that it stays, you know, stays secure. So along with the camera system, a lot of officers buy their own, or not a lot, but some officers buy their own camera systems. But it's, to do it properly, we need to have a system that has a storage.
Server.
Process, yeah, that secures it forensically so we can use it in court, so.
If we're looking at $400 or $500 apiece plus, you know, $8,000 or $10,000 in storage, I think that's probably something that we would be open to fairly expediently.
We'll step up our efforts, we can.
I would just add, given the necessity in our entire community's IT areas, that that would be something that we should consider.
We'll get right on it. We'll pick up our pace.
I'd like to look at that in conjunction with the Camrys.
They're not only donating cars, they're donating cameras now.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, municipal order approving the purchase of upfitting for six police vehicles.
Second. Karen?
No. No, you have.
Any comments?
Yeah, you pretty much have to vote for this if you voted for the first one, so I don't think, we probably should have bundled these together.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, municipal order approving the purchase of six M5300 Edax mobile radio from Advanced Technology.
Motion.
I'll add that these are so much better than the M5200s. That's all I want to say.
Certainly hope we're upgrading all the time.
Is that the second, Brad?
That's the second.
Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you very much. Public Works. Ms. Linda? Municipal order approving the purchase of a Crown lift truck for a recycling department.
We've actually got two options here on that. To bring you all up to date as we talked last time, we had leased it. We are eligible for a fairly substantial credit on the lease price to, to purchase it at this time. So there is an order to purchase it outright. For that, we would use the $10,000 that are in the equipment rental line item in the current budget already. And it would require an additional $12,000. The second option was to do a, it's a lease purchase, which would preserve the credit, but that would be financed over 24 to 36 months and would require interest charges or financing charges, I guess, to carry it over. I would recommend that we do the straight out purchase on it and to take advantage of the credit that we have and utilize the $10,000 that we already have in the equipment rental, which is, that's the only thing that's in that line item is the, the rental.
So the total purchase price then would be?
Twenty.
Twenty-two, 165.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Take advantage of the credit.
Yeah, that way we take advantage of the credit and we do not pay any financing fees. The financing fees on the other option were approximately 14, 14 or 15 hundred dollars.
Motion.
Is that 22, 165? Is that subtracting away the 78, 30?
Yes, either one of these options utilize the 78, 30. And the quoted price that I got was for 36 months. But we could make a more substantial payment than that with the $10,000 that we had approved in the budget. That was only going to be in the 7500 range. So we could have made, made a larger payment, still not gone out of budget and shortened the time.
So we're talking about a total cost of 28,000 dollars?
Twenty-two.
22,000 dollars?
And this also, on this piece of equipment, we did the lease option to buy last year when we got it. And we actually had a loaner unit for almost seven months before the new unit came in. So we're looking at purchasing a five-month-old piece of equipment here. We've used it for five months because we.
So this, this one is five months old, right?
Yeah.
Brad, did you happen to do any?
She gave me the serial number, but I never got the manufacturer. So I, I don't know exactly where it should be. I, you know, I know that forklifts can be bought for a lot less than 22,000 dollars. It, it's, it's much like a, much like a truck. Once you drive it off the lot, you're going to lose 30% on it. You know, I, I think this probably begs a, a larger question. And that's going to be the future of our, of the city of Georgetown's recycling and solid waste department. This is a, you know, I, I bought forklifts that have been operational for years for less than 7, 8,000 dollars, be, be it propane or electric. I'm not arguing the fact that this is probably a pretty good unit, being that it's really only had five or six months worth of usage. But I, you know, we're looking at, and we'll, we'll see it here in a second. We're looking at the purchase of a new garbage truck, you know, at 175,000, as well as a forklift. I mean, we're, we're talking about 200,000 dollars, you know, to, to continue this. I, you know, my, my, my gut reaction tells me that we, we need to look at other options, whether it be full-scale privatization or some type of an incremental privatization. You know, I, I know that's a, that's not going to win me any votes in November by any form or fashion, but I do think that we, that we need to have that conversation. I know that there are many, many cities locally who have chosen that route, who are having and enjoying great success with that. Danville being one of them, who just signed a 10-year deal for private hauling and recycling both. That is less than what we're paying now. You know, I, I think I'll, I'll kind of throw that out to council to see what their, you know, what your all's thoughts are. You know, the RFPs are written in a very wide, in a, in a very wide way in terms of what we are asking a private hauler to do. We, we know from the citizens of Georgetown that recycling and curbside recycling is a major, major issue that we've had to deal with. I think, you know, the mayor and I had meetings even before we took office this last term about, about the opportunities that we could provide with a private hauler on recycling. I think we need to look at that. I think that's something that, that needs to be discussed. I think we can do it, you know, when, when you, when you take into consideration the money that we could potentially spend on a new truck and a new forklift. We take into consideration a normal rate of attrition for that department. When we take into consideration the value of the assets that we have in that department that we could potentially sell. Plus, you take into consideration the amount of, of reserve we have in that department. We could actually finance for a, for a great amount of time, the, the staffing that we have in that department. And we have needs in other areas. We have needs, you know, Kyle, I don't know where Kyle went. We have needs in engineering that, that we could, that we could use employees on. We have needs in public works that we could use employees on. You know, I, I guess I'll shut up now and let, let everyone else chime in on that. But I think now is a, is a great time because this, you know, the truck that we're looking at at 175,000 dollars is only a beginning of what we really need in order to make sure that we have the equipment needed to take care of the city of Georgetown. It may be a situation where we look at privatization of only a certain section of Georgetown. You know, maybe, maybe we, we hold off on purchasing the truck and we, you know, we pick three or four of the most high-density neighborhoods that we have and we look at privatization of those neighborhoods, see how that works out. I just, I know too many cities out there our size that are getting a significant amount of service for the same or less money than, than, than what we're charging our citizens right now.
Brad, do you have in, in mind a timeframe that you're talking about if the council decided to go in that direction? And the reason I ask that is our, our public works needs are.
Sure.
Right now, are immediate.
You know.
That's my concern.
I talked to Andrew about that and I think, you know, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we were talking even if we had to pass a utility or a, a franchising agreement, you know, we could probably do it in 120, 160 days, which is still, even if we continue to rent the truck that we have now, is a considerable less amount of expenditures, of expenditures than buying, you know, 175,000 dollar truck. So I, I don't think it's something that, that would take, that would take a lot of time. I think there's, there's enough precedent out there in local communities that we could, you know, that we could go to, Danville being a prime case example, that we could go to and, and say, hey, you know, let's see your RFP. You know, is that something that would, that would fit with what we have in terms of both solid waste and recycling? And maybe that's something that we could implement. But I think we should, I think we could easily have it done in 120, 160 days.
I don't want to go another weekend, another July 4th weekend.
Sure, no, absolutely not.
That's what I'm concerned.
You don't want to go any weekends where we don't get our garbage.
No, you're right.
Or a Christmas.
Or Christmas, exactly.
That's, that's, I'll tell you, our garbage pickup is, is more pressing than not having a, a police officer.
Well, and, and I think, you know, if we've ever had, if we've ever had a time that's been more opportune to look at this, it's right now. I mean, we've got, we've got significant needs in our infrastructure in terms of trucks, employees and so on. And it, it just seems right, you know, for us to at least take a look at it. And we may take a look at it. We may solicit RFPs and decide, you know what, it's not the right time. But I think we owe it to the citizens to at least explore that option at this point.
Okay. I would be open to exploring it, but why would we want to keep the public works from being able to function and do what they need to do if they're going to sell some of the equipment? They can sell this equipment if we purchased it and the forklift truck.
You, you purchase this 175,000 dollar truck and we decide to, to surplus it in three months, you may get 100,000 dollars for it, maybe 120. You're going to lose a third, maybe even more of the price of this truck, just like you go buy a new.
Well, we're losing 10,000 dollars on the forklift by not buying that.
How much are you paying a month for your garbage truck that you're renting?
It's, we're paying 4,900 a month, but I want you to understand about the truck we're renting. It's, it is a 20-yard truck.
Right.
Not a 25. There were no 25s available. Right now, the, the truck that I presented to you all two weeks ago, that truck's already been sold. The one that's on this memorandum here is a totally different truck. And I just hope it's still available should we decide to purchase something because there's no.
Is this a 25 under what?
This is a 25 double tipper, you know, all the things that we need.
And the truck is available and liable now?
Yes, the truck is, it was as of yesterday. Yes, I, I hope that it's still available right now.
Double tip?
Double tipper, yeah.
Now, adding a tipper is not, not a great expense to a truck.
I have done some research on the, the issue of privatization. I have actually read Danville's guidelines and the setup that they have. I feel like that it's something that should be looked at. Maybe we need to look at it, I don't know. I can't see that 120 days would begin to touch enough time to, to perform a function of that size and look at all of the different aspects, all the different costs, all of the different effects in our city and what our equipment would be worth. It's, it's a complicated issue. And then if we don't get any more equipment, we're going to be creeping right up on Christmas and Thanksgiving holidays and things like that.
When, when Danville made the decision, they, they took six months and they had a new, a new truck on the route.
It's going to take some time.
Sure.
It, it will. There, there will be aspects, there are aspects in the Danville proposal that to me don't appear to, to fit Georgetown exactly.
Beyond, okay, let's say just hypothetically, we buy this truck, the 175, okay? Beyond that purchase, how many more trucks are we going to have to purchase over, under what timeframe?
I'm an interim position, but were I to be staying, it would be my plan to wait at least a year and a half before we would be looking at purchasing another truck.
Do you anticipate, both in terms of manpower and in purchasing these trucks and also I guess the lift for the lift truck or the forklift up at recycling, going, going in the red in the sanitation department? That is, the 15 dollars a month that the residents pay, the 22 dollars a month that the businesses pay and the like, do you anticipate that being sufficient to continue to fund the department on an annual basis? The 15 dollars a month?
Yes, the, the 15 dollars a month for the, the private residents, yes. I am up to my eyebrows in the business section right now. I'm not sure if, where we are on whether we're making any money on that right now.
But the current level of funding for the department, all fees, which all go into the same, into the same account, is that sufficient to run the department for the next few years based upon what you think you're going to need in terms of manpower and what you're going to need in terms of equipment?
I think there's a very good possibility that it is. We've got a lot of growth right now.
Okay, I'll tell you, and I hear some, you know, I'm a short timer, but I'll tell you. The bright line for me in terms of the question of whether or not to privatize garbage collection is if we start to believe that we're not going to be able to run the department for 15 dollars a month on the residents. Because a lot of the proposals out there that I've seen are somewhere around in the 12 to 13 dollar range, with recycling included, with the written curbside recycling component included. I don't know if we can privatize tomorrow and truly save the people in terms of their monthly payment and also in terms of their level of service. But we can't turn around and ask them to pay more than 15 dollars a month.
I'm looking at the businesses. I would not be looking at increasing the residential rate.
And the 20, and from our standpoint also in terms of the businesses. You know, I think we pride ourselves on trying to keep taxes low, on trying to make this as business-friendly a community as possible. At 22 dollars a month, yeah, there's some pretty big places that put out a lot of garbage, some of the garages and whatnot. But we're also charging, you know, tax preparation offices, tax, tax offices, CPA offices, 22 dollars a month. So it isn't like the typical business is, is getting away with, with high weight robbery. 22 dollars a month, in certain cases may be a little low, but in most cases for businesses is, is pretty reasonable and actually pretty positive. And let's face it, we try in this city to be as pro-business and as friendly to business as possible. And one of the ways we can do that is, is through that garbage rate of 22 dollars a month.
For most of the businesses, I think the 22 dollars is acceptable. The problem that we have is that we're picking up all those 22-dollar businesses three times a week. And when you figure that into a pickup, then it's maybe not. And maybe most of them, I'm only starting into this right now, but maybe most of them don't need three times a week. The ones I've talked to, and I've talked to several, they're like, once a week would be fine for our business. It doesn't have to be three times a week. That, that significantly narrows down the number of pickups. Right now, we're doing 2,886 pickups a week to, to earn 12,000 dollars. So it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty high number there. The, the restaurants need it every day, you know? But the attorney's office doesn't, probably, no offense, Andrew.
Maybe you could offer a discount or, you know, reduce pricing if they only.
Yeah, we could do a reduced price, but I just don't want to see anything in terms of.
We can restructure those pricings to, to, to fit the needs of the business possibly and reduce those pickups, which it's not, it's the time. It's the time it takes to send the trucks around to all of these businesses three times a week when you're picking up one Kroger sack, you know?
If, if we were to make the decision tomorrow to implement curbside recycling to all our residential customers, how much more infrastructure would you need in your department to do that?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I haven't been there long enough to have a handle on what that would cost. I can certainly do some research and come up with something, but right now I can't.
Mayor.
Because, because kind of what, what Mark was talking about is we have competitor city, we have other cities our size who are not only providing solid waste, but they're also providing curbside recycling for less than that 15 dollar a month mark. And I think that's, that's kind of what Mark was getting at earlier. So that's why I was curious, if we were to decide to make that decision, what kind of an investment is going to take the city in order to make that happen?
I would, I would question whether or not the curbside recycling was already there before they privatized because we don't have it implemented.
I believe Danville did.
That makes it.
But that doesn't affect the cost of the service, though.
And we've talked about long-term, we've talked about long-term plans as well, what we want out of citizen participation. And I would ask any family out there to do what my family's not willing to do. We only need, we only need, because of the amount that we recycle, we could have garbage picked up twice a month and that would be fine. We don't need it every week at my house and there's six of us. So it's, that's possible, but that's because we recycle. And, you know, we didn't, you know, mayor, when he started getting calls, and that's why he made the statement that we'd rather have public works, I mean, sanitation workers than police officers because nobody calls the mayor's office and says we need, you know, we need more police officers. They call and say my garbage hadn't been picked up.
Exactly right.
But we haven't, but we didn't hold up our end out of City Hall when we asked the citizens to participate in our Herbie program to improve the efficiency, you know? So at this point, it doesn't matter if you, if you set 12 bags of trash at your, your curb and pay 15 dollars a month, you expect it to be picked up. Whereas we talked about, you know, some type of education program where we're working ourselves into a better efficiency. But we just, we keep not following up with that.
We're actually trying to work on the education program that public works through stickers and flowers that we leave. Can't just let people know because I can tell David not to do this, but then I didn't tell you and so he won't do it again. and so he won't do it again, but you will. So it's a constant thing that the drivers have these in the trucks and when they check off, this is your, you're failing in putting your trash out. You've put this, or you put, you put sticks in your Herbie, you know? And so that they leave that then with the Herbie. So it's, it's, we have to educate them one at a time.
And that's not going to happen overnight.
Yeah, and we have to educate them one at a time.
This has been going on since before I was on council and started six years ago. And Mayor came up with a resolution to just, we'll just pick it all up. And that's what a private haulers will do. If you put it out, they'll pick it up whether they, whether you pay $12 or $15.
I would wonder about that because one of my first routes out was to one area that we have in the city, within the city that is private. And I went by there one day to look at some other public works related issue. And the trash pickup had just come through, which is not us, it was a private company. And there were the same things that I see when I go through some of our areas. There was a dead charcoal grill sitting by one can that didn't get picked up. And there was a pile of something else at another can that didn't get picked up. So I don't think the private haulers are going to pick everything up all the time.
Well, that's, that's all in the way the RFP is written. The private haulers will pick up everything that we pick up. They'll pick up yard waste, they'll pick up white goods, they'll pick up furniture. It's all in the way the RFP is written. So we can write the RFP exactly how we want it. So I, I don't want us to leave here thinking, well, the private haulers won't pick anything up. It's all in the way that we write the RFP as to what they will do.
But to write it like that, you know that they're not going to pick it up same price or that Danville's going to be a more expensive cost.
Danville, Danville picks up yard waste, Danville picks up three yards of yard waste every month.
Let's move back up to the lift truck please. We're already in picking up garbage and privatizing. Let's address municipal order approved and purchase of the lift truck.
About a motion? Motion?
Motion. We have a second.
Second, Mayor.
Second, Dave.
Now, is this currently at recycling?
Yes, it is.
It is.
The one with the rounded, with the rounded tires on it?
No, that's the old one.
That's the old one, right?
The old one had the rounded-
So are there two, there are two at recycling?
We're going to give that one to the museum.
Yeah.
It's got that much age on it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is to purchase the lift truck, what's on the agenda. Let's see, show of hands, all in favor, aye?
Excuse me, Mayor. Is this one of two fork trucks we have there?
Yes.
There are two fork trucks at recycling, the other truck is the 91 model.
Is it operational?
Kind of.
If you can roll it right, the wheels roll.
It doesn't have good brakes on it, you can't get off of it and the brakes will hold and it has a couple of other issues. But yes, we do, we use it inside the building.
Is it a safety issue?
It probably could be if we tried to take it outside and use it to do what we use the cram-
Say if it doesn't stop well, it's a safety issue.
But he's-
So why are we using it if it's a safety issue?
He's using it in the building and he turns it off when he gets off of it. It's not like he, the brakes won't lock when you, you get off of it and if you leave it running. But if you turn it off, it will stand where it is. It's lim, very limited usage, very limited usage.
If we had a forklift certification guy come in and look at that, that sounds to me like that's a horrible, horrible-
We can do that.
Situation. I mean, if we-
Sounds like something the safety committee can look at, Maggie?
That might be the first-
Sounds like something that, that OSHA would look at.
We decided we were going to start in City Hall, we might ought to change our thinking on that a little bit then. Any other comments? We still need to vote on this motion. Okay, all in favor of purchasing the lift? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that motion passed. Now let's move on down to the purchase of a rear-loading garbage truck.
Mayor, do I not get an option to vote there?
I think we've been pretty much discussing that up to, up to this point. Go ahead, Brad.
Do I not get an option to vote against that?
Well, if we can, it's 5-3.
Okay.
5-2. Karen's not here.
No. No votes?
Votes that are not.
Be 2. Okay. Now we're moving down to the garbage truck.
I want to ask a question when Barack was talking about the RFPs. The only thing that I want to say, and I by all means am not totally educated and I'm just kind of sifting through this, but we have a sanitation, public works department that is lucrative and makes money. And it has up to this point, I know that, you know, we've done a lot of stuff with the money in the past six years. But if a private hauler can write an RFP and come into our community, why can't we as a public sanitation's department write an RFP and have our own rules?
Absolutely.
Happens all the time.
So why would we not do that and continue with our sanitation department?
And let, and let our own department bid on it just as we would any private hauler?
Why don't they write what they want the, the community to do? Because if you turn it over to a private hauler, they're going to educate the community as to how they're going to pick up their garbage. Is that not a correct statement?
Yeah, the private hauler probably is not going to take 18 phone calls or however many you got the last time and change what they do.
Right, exactly.
When there's 5,500 homes.
But they would have to take a phone call because they're a service. Would that not be a correct statement? Would they not have a customer service representative? Okay. All I'm saying is, is that up to this point, we have a lucrative sanitation department. And right now with Linda being interim, we know we need a truck. So let's let her do her job and if someone wants to take on the responsibility of looking into the privatizing, then take that on and bring it back to council and let's discuss it. But in the meantime, let's let her, let's let her do her job. So I'm in favor of the truck.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, I think we have to make a decision based on what we know right now, you know? And we know we need a truck, we know we're in a pretty dire situation. And we don't know what the next several months holds. And, and I'm receptive to taking a look at, at whatever, but right now, I think we've got to make a decision.
If it took us four months to make a decision on this, the rental on the truck would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $16,000.
That's not the same truck. That's a 20-yard truck with the one tipper. We have to empty it, it won't do a day's route.
Right, but it, but if we were to, if we were from big truck rental, if we were able to get a 25-yard two-tipper truck, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,800 a month.
I think if any of those were available, they were seven, maybe seven, five.
But, but that was based on a one or two month. You told us the last time, the more months that we rented, the lower the rate would be.
And I can't take what that is, I don't know what that would be if there was one available.
It's about $5,000 a month, maybe a little bit less. That's four months at $20,000, even if it took us 16 months or 16 weeks to make a decision.
Can I reiterate? 16-week decision, when has council ever made a 16-week decision? In reality-
I'm not, I'm not saying that's a good thing.
It's not a good thing.
The bright and next speed of government kills us all.
Right, but I'm not saying that it's not an idea for us to look into. I just think that it's not right for us to hold her hands, tie her hands to not do her job while we're trying to pursue something.
It took us that long to get the herpes in, in place, really?
But now, but now let, let's, let's look at this in, in a more practical perspective here. A 20-yard truck versus a 20-yard truck with one tipper versus two tippers is not that significant.
It's a 25-yard.
What did I say, I'm sorry. 20, 20-yard versus 25?
Right.
That's not a huge difference in terms of operational.
That's what you're telling me, but this is her job and she's telling me something different and I'm not a garbage collector, okay? And I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying let's don't tie her hands to do her job.
I'm not sure.
Would it not be tying your hands?
Are we tying your hands?
Well, she's saying that, that 20-yard truck will not complete a, a complete route.
It won't complete a complete route. It has one tipper, we have two pickup men. I can leave one man at the, at the, at the plant, send one man out, but with the one tipper, it's, you have to wait. It takes them longer to do it, that's another trip to the landfill, which is an hour round trip. It's not as efficient, it's not 50% less efficient, but it's not as efficient. And I could not find, I could not find a 25-yard truck out there to lease anywhere when we were going through July the 4th of 2014.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to support Ms. Wise's request. And, you know, I understand there's going to be differences on it, but nevertheless, I'll make the motion.
I'm going to second that.
And there's a second.
I have a question, Linda. Once again, I guess, I mean, I hear, I hear both sides on this and I can certainly understand what David and Connie are saying about go ahead and buy in the truck because we know that this is the problem as we see it right now. But the problem I have is, I kind of want to know down the road, are we setting ourselves on a path of equipment replacement and/or manpower that's going to cause us to raise the garbage rates beyond what they are now? Either on the residences or on the businesses? Because I've already heard you say, we might need to take a look at the businesses, either in terms of service or in terms of raising those rates, and I'm opposed to both. We can work, you know, I know there are businesses that only be picked up three times a week and we can work on that, but I want to be sure that we're not setting ourselves on a path where we're going to be raising these rates.
Sanitation is always produced enough to keep us normal.
But the key is, can we implement curbside recycling at the same rate?
Yeah, but how long was it at eight and at as fast as we're growing?
I know, but it's, but we're the ones that raise it to $15. It's not like we're following the market, we just raised it to $15.
I'm trying to look at efficiencies in the, within the department at things that cost more, more efficient ways to do what we're doing. My long-range plan at this point would be if we, if we don't privatize, if we keep it in the city, that we could, within a year and a half to two years, have another route for another automated truck, which would reduce the manpower. We have a position right now that I have not requested to fill and have no intentions of trying to fill the position right now because I don't think we need it. If we got the other automated truck, we could handle some amount of growth, again, without adding another person.
But can we implement curbside recycling? That's the key for me.
That, that I can't answer right now because I just don't know enough about it yet.
And see, that's, that's kind of the, the crux of what I'm trying to present here is, in the private industry, they can do that for less than what we're, for less than what we're paying now. Until we get, until we get a solid answer, is it prudent for us to go on and spend $175,000?
I got a map here. We could put in the RFP that whoever gets the bid has to buy 175,000 our garbage truck from us.
That, that's a great business decision.
I mean-
You know what, we can also put in the bid that they hire X amount of employees from our sanitation department too.
Put that on the list.
So I mean, I, I just think, until we, until we fully expand on this and fully research this, I'm not, I just can't support spending 175,000 on a truck.
The problem is, we have to make a decision, she needs a decision made.
That's right, because we need this now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, it literally, it took us a half a year to implement the herpes. You know, I mean, it was a wonderful thing, we talked about it for a long time.
How many years ago was that?
Kelly, I don't even remember how many years ago.
And we, and we still haven't implemented the herpes.
And it's still being done. That's, that's a great point. I'm going to share one more thing with you, and I do this in all due respect. Spoke to a citizen that lived in Murray, Kentucky last week. They pay for curb, for, for recycling $45 every three months, per quarter. $45 per quarter to have the recyclables picked up. It's optional.
Is that, is that in the county or in the city?
I don't know, it's in the city.
And they pay $45 a quarter?
And I don't know who it is, I'll get more details, $45, think about that. You know, and I mentioned a dollar a month, you know?
Danville pays $13.25 a month for the city for solid waste and recycling.
I just question the level of service. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I don't mind looking. I think we're all receptive to looking at it, Brad. We just have to make a decision based on what we know right now. And, and a $175,000 truck and a $20 million budget is, is not that big deal.
This is a truck that the council took out of budget to begin with, that, that we have money to cover.
Yeah.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second. Let's have a real call vote on this.
I see, I mean, I, I see both sides of this and-
Absolutely.
I, I do. But the biggest concern I have, again, and this is my sixth year on council. The Herbie program started before I got on council. I talked about with, with, you know, I grilled Terry on this when he was director. And we, as a council, this, this council, I tried to take steps to make some improvements in the, the citizens' understanding and citizens' participation in the Herbie so that we can do the automation in some neighborhoods, but we knew not all neighborhoods were going to happen. And you're right, David, this is something that it appears as if we need it now. The problem I have is that we do this now without talking about the long term. The Herbie started eight, 10 years ago and we don't ever get back to it. This is, I'm going off council December 31st this year and it's still not solved. And I've been asking the same question for six years. My family's recycling, we're not, I don't fill up the Herbie. I mean, Mayor didn't back us up when we made a, a decision to do this with, with, with the community because he got calls on it, so we have a resolution saying just leave your trash at the curb, we'll pick it up.
Right, either, either we picked it up or it laid there on the sidewalk or people took it someplace else and dumped it. That's exactly what happened to it.
I understand what you're saying, Kelly. I really do. But we have an interim person that took the place of the person that was on here for six years. And that might be why it's not been done. We can't expect her to do it in, how many, how long have you been there?
Five, five, six weeks.
Weeks, yeah.
And getting through stuff and trying to make things happen and to keep our citizens happy until we can look at the privatization. That's all I'm saying.
And I, I don't think anybody's laying it on, on her because she's doing an awesome job.
She is, and she might take us another, another level.
She's doing an incredible job. I think what we've got to do is we've got to look long-term and, and to Kelly's point, you know, if, if we actually want to move forward with the Herbie program, what we should be looking at is an automated truck. You know, by, by spending $175,000, we're actually taking a step back in terms of collections in solid waste collections by, by getting a rear loader truck.
I think she addressed this though at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I, I made that decision to step down to the rear loader versus the automated because I don't think the city is ready to have the second automated truck.
And we should be.
You're exactly right.
But it will be, it can be in a couple of years. And another thing is those automated trucks pick up so much stuff that the ones we have, the one that we have running that's running five days a week now is, is, is going through all the subdivisions that are compatible with it. So we're going to have to get parking ordinances in effect in order to utilize some of these other subdivisions. We've got to get off-street parking taken care of. There are issues, but then that's why the long-range plan is a year and a half, two years from now, another automated truck, and we'll be ready. And if we're still doing the garbage-
And she is doing what we're asking her to. Those of us on this side of the table are the ones that are not. We're the ones that are not doing it. And you're going to continue on, so it's up to you all.
I'm going to share one more thing.
Because it's not going to happen by December 31st.
The situation with the herpes today is infinitely better than it was before we had the herpes. And we had huge problems throughout town. So I mean, can we improve it more? Absolutely, but it is, it's significantly better than it was, Kelly.
No, I disagree.
Well, I was here, I mean, I heard people were in here, they were-
I know you've been here 25 years, you've been on council, but this is-
A lot of good experience. There were a lot of people that were coming to these meetings that were complaining to us about open containers and bags and trash everywhere. It was a huge issue, it was one of the biggest I've ever seen.
It was a clean bit.
Prior to the herpes, yes, I agree. But since then, the council, we haven't, we haven't stepped up, we haven't made any plans. We've asked about it, we've talked about it, but we don't get to it. Maybe in a year and a half, under her leadership, if she wants to stay as the interim director. I don't, you know, that we could get there. I, I mean, I'm pretty damn skeptical sitting right here after six years that that'll ever happen.
Well, I, I have a little bit more faith in that.
But this is the body that does it, Kelly.
You've got to back us up too.
What do you mean? I, I back out, I always back what the decision, I may not agree with you.
You backed out on us on this before and did a resolution to pick up the garbage.
Well, I think that was the right decision to make too. Like I say, we had garbage laying on the street, on the sidewalk, and it was taken, we got dump sites, several of them where people taking things and dumping.
Right, but the council had made the decision-
You've got your decision to make, I make a decision based on what I think has been through the community.
I know, I know.
But you guys are the ones that do the administrative part of it.
Yeah, I think in retrospect, your decision to pick up the garbage off the streets was probably a good decision. I think, I'm going to go ahead and back you up on that one. I, I don't think, whatever the ordinances say, we have a charge, especially as a municipal sanitation department, to pick the trash up off the streets, that's one of the basic functions. Absolutely. And you don't want, you don't want that to happen, so I, I support your decision.
So I, I support your decision to make that, make that step. Like I said, Linda, I'll vote for this tonight, but I don't want this to go on a path where we're raising the rates, both on the businesses and the residences. And it's not $175,000 purchase within a $20 million budget. It's a $175,000 purchase within the $1.7 million sanitation budget that has to be respected. We can't go over that budget.
From the only department that actually operates in the black.
And it better operate in the black because there's no other reason. I mean, we raised that, we, we almost doubled the rates six years ago.
Because we were subsidizing.
Because we were subsidizing and we said, we don't want this to operate in the red. We don't want this to operate in the red anymore. I don't want it to operate in the red anymore.
But if we had equipment that was all up to date, we wouldn't be operating in the black. We'd be operating in the red. But the, the route that you were talking about, we couldn't get one route in that truck a day, is that one day's route?
Uh-huh.
Can you talk about? So you're saying that we pick up how many tons of trash in that one rear loader a day?
Well, those routes, that's, they were using it for the business route. Because of only having the one tipper, it did better with the other ones on there. Most of the ones are doing around nine or 10. But it's.
Nine or 10 tons?
Yeah.
But that's a 20-yard truck. That should pick up more than.
But that number is, is so hard to nail down because if it's, it's, it's volume and its weight. So it depends on what we're putting in. You know, we're picking up schools, we got a lot of paper, you know, stuff like that. And it's, that's going to, that's, that, the volume's going to get us before the weight.
But, but volume would denote how many stops it makes. And that's not going to depend on how big the truck is. That's going to depend on how many stops it can physically make a day.
Yeah, and it depends on what's in that top. Because there's no way to say that, that this one is going to have a whole, you know, four Herbies full and this one's going to have one full. So that, it, it is all, I've, I've been trying to nail down the tonnage and it's really, really hard to do. There's not enough to do, to do the whole route.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll call for a vote on this. We've spent enough time on this.
I think if, if the council decides to bring a plan before this, this body to vote on, that, that, that would have to come first. Do some research. But right now, I want to take a vote on purchase of this garbage truck, which we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Stay.
Mr. Pan?
No.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, move on to the next item and we have another MO.
I almost forgot I don't get to leave yet.
Yeah, you've got one here for salt.
I got the salt.
Oh, I don't have that on my agenda.
No, we don't. We had it added. Linda, would you explain what our salt situation is, please?
We have 900 tons of salt in the salt barn right now, which is, the barn is full. Last year, we used around 25 tons, which we all know was an exceptionally bad year. But salt has gone up a wee bit, like from $58 a ton to $89 a ton.
$89?
Yeah. We, we put it out for bids. We had one, only one bidder. I called one of the other people who had bid on it before and they were unable to bid on it because they only had 500 tons of salt available. We, we normally bid for 2,000 ton. We've got, they want a guaranteed purchase amount on the bid. I negotiated, did negotiate that down to 1,200 tons. So we can, we have to buy 1,200 tons. We have the ability to buy up to 2,000 at the same rate.
Sounds like the makers of the salt are expecting a repeat of last winter.
There's not a lot of salt out there, evidently. It's.
It's a huge hike.
Yeah, it's a huge, huge, huge step up.
Probably, yeah. I think fuel is the main cause regarding.
And they're importing a lot of it evidently from South America, I think, so.
Motion.
Second.
Any, any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Now I'm through.
Stick your leg.
There you go.
Okay, council comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I got a couple things.
Yes, sir.
Uh, over on Oak Street, as you're going down to the old Penn Avenue Fire Station.
Oak Street.
Oak Street. There's those grates that are on the sidewalk. There are two grates and they're basically storm sewer grates and they're on the sidewalk as you're walking up to the Penn Avenue Fire Station, coming from Gannell. Anyway, those grates are, you know, the width between the, the metal slats is about this big, about, about big enough for kids. I saw a kid kind of put their foot through the grate and I was worried they almost broke their leg. But they ended up, she just scratched it. But anyway, we might want to take a look at that and put like a new kind of grate there.
Oak Street and where?
Oak Street, as you're going up to the Penn Avenue Fire Station on the west sidewalk, there are actually two grates. One right by the fire station, back parking lot, and then I think another one up a little bit.
Okay.
And they're pretty wide. The slats are pretty wide. And it's, it's been there forever. I just happened to notice it the other day when.
We've been lucky then, maybe.